Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District's regular meeting for Wednesday, November 6th, 2019. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes it has.
Would you please call the roll?
Carolyn?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Turner?
Here.
Curtham?
Here.
Olmstead?
Here.
Peschall?
Solaji?
Here.
We have a farm.
Thank you very much. We have two Franklin students joining us this evening to lead us in the pledge. We have Arthur King and Aleah King, brother and sister, fifth grader and a kindergartner.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are so happy you joined us tonight. Our reason for being here is for children and so it's important that we have children at all of our meetings. So we're especially happy that you were able to join us tonight. So Aleah, thank you very much for coming and bringing your mom and dad with you tonight. That's for you. You can... And Arthur? Thank you so much. This certificate is for you as a remembrance of your coming and helping us make the pledge tonight. So you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, but we know if you have other things to do tonight... Yes, yes. But anyway, thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate having you here tonight. You're welcome.
Oh, with her little skirt.
Her hair, her pearls. I need to babysit some kids. Feel better. All right, with that, we will move on to the Board President's report. I want to thank Dr. Cartwright and Mr. Evans for both attending the Wisconsin Association of School Boards' annual, or excuse me, fall meeting, annual fall meeting, last week in Nina where Mr. Evans was the recipient of an award for his professional growth and development. So we congratulate Jim on that. And also, Mr. Evans and Dr. Cartwright were able to attend the WASB, Wisconsin Association of School Boards' Legislative Advocacy Conference on Saturday and got an update on some recent legislation. So I appreciate them being there. On October 25th, I was able to attend and to represent this district at the Professional Standards Council, which is a group that advises the state superintendent on legis... on, not legislative, licensing issues of teachers. We were able to have some time with our state superintendent of public instruction, Carolyn Stanford-Taylor, who presented a concern to the group related to not only the need to attract more people into the teaching profession. Unfortunately, those numbers have gone down statewide over the last few years, but also to retain teachers in the profession. She noted that there has been a trend toward exodus of teachers from the teaching profession, typically between the teachers who have experience of anywhere from 11 to 20 years. And that's a big concern statewide. It's a big concern to attract more people into the teaching profession. And so I'm sure we're going to hear more about both of those issues moving forward. And we also discussed some of the issues related to undergraduate teacher education programs and what might be included in those that is research-based and which shows effectiveness. So I'm sure we'll be hearing more as a state moving forward on those issues. With that, I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Cartwright and recognize that we have a visitor in the audience. And we're very pleased that Senator Fine is here tonight. And I know that all of us have interacted with him. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Cartwright.
Thank you so much. And so prior to starting off with both of our high school representatives, I think this was a very important time in which to invite Senator Fine up if you would like just for a moment, if you have any words that you would like to share with the board, only because we're extremely appreciative of your attendance here tonight, as well as for providing us with the most current version of the Wisconsin Blue Book and ensuring both of our high school representatives have those as well. Thank you.
And I have plenty more if you need more. Each senate office is allotted way too many and each assembly office is allotted a little bit less than way too many. So I'm happy to be here tonight to, A, get you the Blue Books, but it's the latest version. They just came out a couple of weeks ago. A lot of your school teachers have requested them, which I will be delivering those personally. I'll be up at Oshkosh North on Friday and then around to a bunch of other middle schools. And there's also booklets that one of the bureaus put together about the history of Wisconsin and little pamphlets, little games to play, things like that. So we'll be dropping a bunch of those off as well with some maps and things for the teachers throughout the district, all the way from Wapahon all the way up to Oshkosh. So happy to get around and interact with everyone and just see what's going on in the district. The state budget was passed on time and I know that was crucial to school districts around the state and municipalities as well. So we were happy to do that. So just if you ever have any questions, feel free to reach out to my office. The number's in the Blue Book. But I think you guys all know how to get ahold of me as well. There's the emails in the Blue Book as well. So anytime you got a question, an issue, or an idea, something that we could change in state law to do something better, or just change an idea, we're always willing to listen and talk about those things as well.
Well, again, we greatly appreciate you coming tonight and definitely will put use to the resources.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Senator.
At this time, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Cabal, please, from Oshkosh North High School.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Cabal. If you guys don't already know, I am the Oshkosh North student representative. So we will be talking about some of the things that has happened in October since the past meeting that I've been here and then some things that are coming up for November. So as you all knew, we had homecoming back in October and the dance is on the 19th. We had a lot of great student spirit this year. We got the freshmen really involved. Their section was completely covered in white, so that was super awesome. So thanks to Link who they did an amazing job of getting the freshmen more involved this year. We also held an alumni lunch for those teachers who used to teach at North. So you guys can see there in the bottom left corner, some of those staff that attended. And there are also more, some more pictures of the parade, like choir and drama always does a really good job, student council, the fire truck, and of course, many more. And Verb also sponsored our tailgate party, as you guys can see on the top right over there. And the staff also did an amazing job with their staff spirit this year, considering we had a lot of new staff members. Spooktacular also happened back in October, right before Halloween. And Polaris also always does a really great job of getting this event put together and organized. They did a really good job decorating the halls and getting a lot of clubs involved this year as well. So that was super awesome. And we got a lot of people to come as well. And these are our four seniors, Nolan Spanbauer, John Conrad, Mary Johnson, and Paige Wilson. Congrats to them. They were able to sing with the new Voices Master Singer Program this year in their fall concerts. And so what this program does is they invite the top choir students from regional high schools to sing with them in their fall concerts. And so then they get to challenge their own skills and they get to learn some new stuff, as well as get some new experience as well. And as you guys can see in this photo right here, Ellie and Devon actually qualified for state for bowling. Ellie placed in the eighth place for her section and Devon placed in third. They did an amazing job this year. And so next we'll be talking about the fall sports. So the fall sports have actually wrapped up, but the girls swim will be competing in the sectionals this Saturday in Nina. And we are hoping to qualify again for state this year. So Ellie Pico is really hoping for that. She is super pumped up and so is everyone else. And then last Saturday, Jack Share competed for his state in cross-country in Wisconsin Rapids and he got seventh, so that was pretty good as well. He got a better score than he did in 2018, so that's a really good improvement for him. And then going back to mid-October, junior, the junior golfer Grace Miller qualified for the state golf tournament. So she placed 20th overall in her state golf appearance. That's super awesome. It's great to see that our students are doing really amazing sports this fall. So congrats to those students. And we would like to thank all the coaches, the student athletes, and all the fans that helped support it. We can't do without any one of them. And then coming up with winter sports, next Monday, boys and girls hockey will begin and so will gymnastics and girls' basketball. And the following Monday, on the 18th, boys' basketball, boy swimming and diving and the wrestling will also start. And we are hoping for full rosters and great competition again this year. All right. And then you guys have heard this a couple of times already, but our fall play will be this week and this weekend. So if you guys want to come, for adults it is $7 and for students it is $5. But if you come with your high school ID, you can get in for free. So that's super awesome for those of you who want to come there in high school. So the play would be at Oshkosh North in the auditorium on Thursday through Friday at 7:00 and then Sunday at 1:00. And coming up is the Sweat for a Vet. I'm sure all of you school board members have heard of this already by some emails that were sent out recently. So this is open to anybody, to the public, and this is going to be raising money for, like the training of service dogs for those veterans who are in need of a service dog, whether that be coping with like PTSD or anything else like that, or just to have a companion to help them cope. All the money will be going towards them. And the event is on November 11th, the day of our Veterans Day Assembly in the morning. So if you guys want to just come, or you guys can register online on the community's website. There are also more information on our school page, on Facebook, and the community's page as well. And as the snow is coming, I'm sure you all are very excited for Christmas. So our Magicals group is going to be having a little concert soon and it will be on Thursday, December 19th, at the Oshkosh Masonic Center from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. So please come and support. They always do a really great job every year as well. And that is all for this one. See you again.
Thank you. I can verify that that magical concert is outstanding. And they often have cookies too, so. Work up an appetite while you're listening, you can satisfy it. But it's a delightful concert and a wonderful venue. We're fortunate to be able to use that venue for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. And now for West High School.
Hello, my name is Amelia Smith and I am the student body president of Oshkosh West High School. To start off, athletics, as Cabal just said, most of the seasons for athletics are wrapping up. The only one that is left is swim team besides dance team, which is, goes year-round. So swim team will be competing in sectionals this weekend at Nina High School. Along with swim team, the cross-country athletes just ran at state, Taylor Guido and John Thiel. They did very well at state. They got best times. Taylor finishing, Taylor and John both finishing in the middle of the pack for the D1 runners. And we also have one of our students going to state bowling for Special Olympics and he's very exciting for, very excited for that. Oh, and along with that, we had our send-off, state send-off last week. So that is what that picture was from. And since all of the events or seasons are wrapping up for fall, we just want to thank our seniors since the class of 2020 is so big and many of the athletes had a very big impact on their sports and like the athletics overall. There were so many leaders that are going to be, that they just realized that they're putting on their jersey for the last time or competing in their last sports event. So that's, at the same, while it's sad, it's a good thing because they're moving into a different part of the life. That is most of our seniors and who have competed in fall sports. Upcoming athletic seasons, our gymnastics just had their first, their meeting this past Monday and they will be starting this coming Monday. Boy swimming also just had the meeting for their sport and they will be starting in a couple of weeks. And wrestling and basketball have already started training their preseason and getting strong and ready for the upcoming winter seasons. Music, there is a lot that has been going on with music. So to start off, band has, our school has been having longer W-hours, which is a time in the middle of the day from like 9:00, 9:45 to 10:20-ish to just like meet with teachers. But this week and the upcoming weeks, it will be longer since the marching band is preparing for the holiday parade, which is very exciting since Oshkosh West is known for the marching band and how advanced they are. Orchestra, band, and choir will be performing at the Sounds of the Season Concert on Sunday, December 15th, which is also very exciting since choir classes have already been getting Christmas music, which we all enjoy. Along with that, choir has been doing a lot of stuff to get a lot of events, to get choir students together and like bonding. They've had the Choir Bond Fire on the 24th of October where 50 kids went to one of our students' parents' house to get together and make some relationships, which was very interesting for the parents of them.
They'll say, "Thank you, parents."
Yes, thank you to those parents because they had the opportunity to make lots of memories there. Along with that, choir is decorating the classroom on Monday, December 22nd to get in the holiday spirit. So that also brings students together to meet each other. For our choir class, we have just gotten a student teacher from Lawrence University. Her name is Miss Patch. And so she just arrived on Monday and the every single class did a different thing to welcome her. One class had Michael Jackson cutouts all over the room. I'm not sure how that related to that, but it was very interesting. My class gave her Sour Patch Kids since her name is Miss Patch. And another class had a piñata for her. So that's, we hope that she felt welcomed. With that, Magicals and musical is coming up, although Magicals already, they scheduled their first, their concert for an event. And Sister Act has already started their practices for the musical. This is very exciting. The one-act play qualified for state, so they're getting ready to perform their act in the next couple of weeks. Along with that, we have a variety show, which is kind of like a talent show and it's going to take place for the public to see on Friday, November 15th and Saturday, November 16th, both at 7:30 p.m. We have many talented students that are going to be performing. They had to try out for this event, so it is very well-filtered and awesome. Yes, very well-filtered. And so the variety show and the one-act play will be available at those times on Friday, November 15th and Saturday, the 16th. Clubs. So there are many new things going on with our clubs as we finish off the first quarter. Our Spanish club just got done making, having an event where they made salsa for the teachers, tried their own recipes, which some of the teachers do not look very impressed with. But I think they enjoyed the event. Save is continuing to go into homerooms of underclassmen and let underclassmen know like skills and traits that they wish they would have had when they were younger in order to be more successful in high school. Prom Committee is starting to meet and we have our theme of the roaring twenties. It's 1920, 2020, try to bring that in. Rock, Reaching Our Campus Through Christ, is actually revamping itself and like totally changing the way it runs its clubs. And so we are excited to see how Rock comes out and like brings in more students. And mock trial actually is going to be having, they're going to be having scrimmages in the next couple of months, but they've started preparing for this February where they hope to go to state. As you all know, homecoming was the week before North. So it's been, it was early slash mid-October, no, September?
October.
October.
It was extremely cold.
That was very cold.
Yes, it was. Um, so it, we actually did very well. We sold over 800 tickets, which is like a record for us since the, a couple of years ago. And you can see our hallway decorating. We spent three hours the Friday night before and decorated the whole place. And so the students down there are part of student government and they gave up their Friday night wrap. Along with that, we have a school-wide cleanup this Friday where many clubs are getting involved and helping to pick up trash and other things around the school to keep our school clean. We had this new like reward system in, at Oshkosh West where in order to eliminate the amount of tardies or, so every day they take the, they separate classes through like the tardiness and like how many tardies are in each class for seniors, juniors, sophomores, and freshmen. And so throughout the two-week period, they want to see who has the least amount of tardies and then that grade gets a donut party. So we had seniors won the first two-week period. And so we got a donut party this past Monday, which was very yummy. We, a lot of students just had their artwork shown at the OASD Student Art Show and it's an honor to be picked. So many students from West got to see their art in a show, which was very awesome. And on Halloween, we had, student government hosted a costume contest. And so here are a few winners out of the 90 or 100 entries, which was very impressive. We have a picnic table. That was our staff winner. And then we have the other student winners. And some honorable mentions was administration with their shark attack, which is very nice. And Elsa, which has also been. Dedication is key. And finally, also on Halloween, we had our annual haunted house, which was ran by our leadership classes and our global academy and was very much of a success and was very scary. So that's great. Thank you and I hope you have a great month.
Thank you so much. What a wonderful presentation. At this point in time, I'm going to go ahead and transition us over into the superintendent's good news report. We're going to start right away with Carl Treger Elementary School recently observed White Canes Safety Day, celebrating the achievements of individuals with visual impairments across the United States. Students learned how this event applied in the Carl Treger School setting and what they can do to support a safe environment for students with visual impairments. Additionally, third graders at Carl Treger Elementary were recently inspired to create their own environmentally-friendly art. The students had so much fun arranging fall flowers and other natural objects in the form of a medalla. Students at Jefferson Elementary School recently experienced a sports stacking presentation by SpeedStacks. Students learned new and exciting games using the Sports Stacks, which will be incorporated into other activities in their curriculum and will also help them when they participate in National Stack Up Day on November 14th. Reed Elementary School recently hosted a math night for parents, students, and staff. The school community enjoyed a dinner followed by a raffle, information on Bridges Math Applications, and an opportunity for students to teach their parents all the Bridges workplaces they have learned so far this year, as well as the October Number Corner. The district's Arts Core Program recently brought Barney Salzberg to the district to work with staff, students, and schools. Barney visited the Oshkosh Area School District Arts Core Colony Teachers at the Payne Art Center in Gardens for an afternoon workshop on creativity. He also visited five Oshkosh Area School District schools, reading some of his best books to the students and talking about his creative process. The Oshkosh North marketing class was recently able to attend a unique field trip to the Kohler Company to learn how a successful global company produces and markets their products. Students are learning about product planning and having the ability to see how many factors truly go into the production and promotion of those products was invaluable. Additionally, Spanish students from Oshkosh North recently traveled to Chicago for a cultural lesson on the Day of the Dead, one of the most wildly celebrated holidays in Mexican and Latin culture. Shapiro STEM Academy invited families to pop into reading instruction during a recent school event this past month. Guests were invited to join their child's classroom instruction during the literacy's lesson. Students and families were excited to experience new books and share them with others. South Park 7th and 8th Grade Orchestra students performed their first annual Halloween-themed concert for the Boys and Girls Club of Oshkosh. The orchestra played pieces with spooky music and screams and read a story with sound effects. The concert was a lot of fun for attendees and orchestra students. South Park Middle School also recently held its first-quarter acknowledgement to celebrate students demonstrating the Panther Way, respectful, responsible, and safe. During the last period of the day, students could choose to play in the gym, sing karaoke, cook pizzas, play games, and more. This year, many of the district's community learning centers partnered with NASA to bring STEM activities to their after-school programs. As a part of the project, our centers had the opportunity to have a conference call with some employees from NASA. Students from the Perry Tipler Alps Melt Program participated in a conference call with a NASA engineer. The students got to ask questions and learn more about the NASA program. Perry Tipler and Alps students love the new banner that was recently added to their hallway this week. Students have definitely learned to be the I in kind and show kindness every day. Community 2 students are partnering with CrossFit Oshkosh and hosting an event on Veteran Day from 6:30 to 7:30 a.m. called Sweat for a Vet. And I think we just heard about that a little bit. It's an event for all levels and all are invited to participate. The transition back to civilian life can be difficult for some veterans, which is why students are raising funds for an organization called Got Your Six Canines. This organization provides service dogs at a very low cost to veterans. These dogs provide support and healing, allowing for more social connectedness. Students are inviting family, friends, teachers, or anyone who wants to sweat for a vet. To learn more, please visit the community's website or Facebook page. Congratulations to Jack Schreier, a junior at the Oshkosh North High School. He finished seventh out of 190 runners at the Division 1 State Cross-Country Meet. So I think a couple of these individuals look very familiar to us tonight. Two of our very own school board members were recently recognized for Al... Two of our very own school board members were recently recognized for outstanding involvement and professional development by the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. Board President Dr. Barbara Harazog received a Level Five Member Recognition and Board Member Jim Evans received a Level Two Member Recognition, although I think he may have already gone up to Level Three. Um additionally, uh Dr. Harazog was re-elected to serve as the Wasbe Region Seven Representative. So in addition to representing um the school board members throughout Region Seven, I think it's important um to note, I think, the special congratulations uh to Dr. Harazog because she was also elected to serve as the second Vice President for the Wasbe Board of Directors and in a couple of years will assume that role of President, so congratulations, Dr. Harazog.
Thank you, I look forward to representing all of you in Region Seven.
And on behalf of the Oshkosh Area School District, I am certainly grateful for, for both of your commitments, well, everybody's commitment, um but specifically for these awards um and the many contributions and dedication to excellence, so thank you for your service. So as you know, Superintendent, I'm committed to be present and engaged in our schools and throughout Oshkosh, on the screen you'll see just a few examples of where I've been spending my time, but I wanna call out to point one particular event, only because the students and the teachers coordinated with one another to ensure that they could scare the socks off of me as I went through West's haunted mansion.
Oh no.
Um literally, they had their radios and I kept wondering what's going on and, and finally one of the teachers even jumped up, "Well, hello, Dr. Cartwright." And so it was a quite a, a special event and I was, they, they, they definitely got me, so. I wanted to make a point of that and uh we are also today and tomorrow, we're also participating in our second um visit from our consultants um from the, the model that we have adopted through the um University of Wisconsin um Madison for our equity work. And so they're here today, they'll be here again tomorrow, we already had one deep brief today, we'll have another one tomorrow. So we're very proud of the work and um I can't wait to give you some updated information on that, uh but we have made significant progress from our very first um meeting that occurred um back in September, so it's exciting times related to that work that's happening right now. So without further ado, at this point in time, I'm going to ask for Dr. Gunlock to come up um in order to provide us with an update related to the Facility Advisory Committee.
Good evening, everyone. This is the fifth of sixth meeting, so we're coming down to the wire here on the Facility Advisory Committee. Um as we have in the past several meetings, we always start out with what the committee charge was, uh that the Board of Education authorized the creation of the committee uh that was comprised of a variety of community members to review the pertinent information based on the outcomes of a recently uh completed assessment and provide you with some recommendations uh focusing in on a three-to-four section per grade level model at the elementary level and an eight-to-ten section uh at the middle school level. So uh this was our October twenty-eighth meeting that was held at North High School. Uh it was very well attended. And as always, if people want to see what that meeting was like, they can go to our new website under the district, they can click on Facility Advisory Committee and all the information, all the presentations, all the videos from meetings two through five are, are there and they're, they're a couple hours a shot, but they're on YouTube and anybody can uh take a look at them through our district YouTube channel, so. Meeting Five Highlights, uh we reviewed the process again, the schedule and the norms, we always do that at every meeting. We reviewed the input on the emerging draft Facility Advisory Committee report that is gonna be coming to you. Uh that report is gonna be uh coming sometime after their final meeting on November eleventh. We reviewed the potential recommendations around uh the key criteria for school site adequacy. Bray Architects helped us with that. Debt payment timeline and taxpayer impact, Sue Schnorr was able to present some information along those lines. Uh we spent the majority of our time looking at the role of the facilities in the master plan uh as, as is related to our educational vision. In other words, if we are going to prepare students for twenty, thirty, and beyond, what role do our facilities have in that preparation? There was a discussion on formalizing a recommendation coming your way on including playground equipment in, in new construction, so if there are new schools where that would be appropriate, that that be included with the project, so that, that had a lot of support. And I was, I uh stood in for Dr. Cartwright at the Citywide PTO and I can tell you there was universal support at that level, too. They were very happy to hear about that. So um we are preparing for Meeting Six, which is going to take a look at our survey results, those are gonna be completed as of November tenth, and then finalizing the FAC report, which will be presented to you at a subsequent board meeting. So what's next? Uh anybody who's watching on camera or has not taken advantage of it yet, I would encouraging, encourage them to take the OASD Community Survey. Uh we have several thousand responses in to date and we are looking for more, so that would be awesome if they could get that done by November tenth. They can do that via paper, they can also do that online. We are continuing to generate a frequently asked questions document. We did reach out with our first internal update for our internal staff in terms of the work of the FAC and um got a lot of questions answered and also got a lot more questions from our, our staff that we'll be answering on a weekly basis. Uh the next meeting is Meeting Six, as I said, it's November eleventh, it'll be at West High School from five-thirty to eight-thirty, the public is certainly welcome, uh and we'll be reviewing those survey results and we will finalize our report, so that is my update. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Dr. Gunlock.
Thank you.
Are there any committee reports from board chairs of the various committees? I think this was a quiet week as far as meetings, which, which means that the next meeting will have probably three or four, which is good. All right, uh non-agenda-related public forum, I don't believe anyone signed up to speak and the same with the agenda-related public forum, so we will move on to the uh one and only workshop for this evening, which is Districtwide Data Accountability with Ms. Conrad.
So, good evening, um I'm Julie Conrad, I'm the Director of Curriculum and Assessment, so um tonight we are gonna be looking at our annual Districtwide Accountability and Data Report. So getting started, um our Districtwide Accountability and Data Report is grounded in the Wisconsin State Assessment System and when we look at standardized tests or we think about state assessments, these are the state assessments that students um are taking and the data was unembargoed and became public on September twelfth. Coming up on November twelfth will be the next batch of data and accountability reports, which are our school and district report cards and those will be released, so that's just about in a week. So within this, all of our data helps inform us how we are doing on our strategic plan and so these are our goals, our five goals within our strategic plan. So as we're going through this presentation, this will be set up in question format so that it can help us take a look at how are we doing through these and answering questions that a lot of us have, a lot of us ask when we wanna know how are we doing and more, and particularly how are our students achieving, especially around goal number one. So data sources, we're gonna spend a lot of time talking about big data, in other words, our state assessment data. With that said, we have a lot of internal data that we are collecting, student learning data, and so up on the screen is listed our internal student assessment data, so you notice up there you don't see the Forward Exam or the ACT because the, this is information that we are collecting on student learning at the classroom level to help teachers push and move forward with instruction based on what a child or what a student or what a teen needs within the classroom. In addition to that, we wanna know how are we doing as school, schools, so there are other data indicators that we look at as well and you can see those listed up on the screen. So as I start to go into the numbers and data, you've heard me say this throughout my whole term being Director of Curriculum and Assessment, is that every, behind every single one of these numbers is a child, is a teacher that has been working with that child, is a school community that's been working with that child, is a family that has been supporting that child. So every time we're talking about those numbers, those numbers represent children and teens within our school district, so let's move forward. So first up is um the ACT and we're actually gonna start with our graduates. So up here is our ACT composite trend for Oshkosh Area School District graduates and so recently released was the class of two thousand eighteen. Graduates two thousand nineteen will be coming, but they just graduated a few months ago and you can see where we are as far as our trends go and you can see where the state is um with their ACT composite and we've had an uptick um with our graduating seniors, the class of two thousand eighteen.
Julie, just can we go back a minute?
Yeah.
Um on this, just so the public knows, in the fourteen fifteen, you can see that huge jump in numbers.
Absolutely.
That's when it came mandatory that all eleventh graders take this test. And that's why those numbers are so different.
Correct, the class of two thousand eighteen is the third graduating class.
Yes.
Where all students within that graduating class were required to take the ACT.
Yeah, 'cause that's a big jump, so I just wanted to make sure people.
It is, and so overall, the state average composite score also went down because the more students that you have taking the assessment, um you're gonna see, you're gonna see decline in the average. So how successful where is the overall student population in the ACT? So this is looking at our grade eleven students or the class of twenty twenty, who are now seniors, right? And so um their composite is right now for the class of juniors is nineteen point three. What we're going to expect to happen is those students can retake that ACT, there's other things, so we would expect that graduating class composite to go up and you can see where our students are performing um across there and so that is all of our uh grade eleven students. Here is our four-year graduation rate, we are on the class of two thousand eighteen. Yes, we do know what the graduation rate for the class of two thousand nineteen is, it's still embargoed, I can't release that yet. I suspect you might be pleased with that number, I'm gonna put that out there.
But you can't say.
But I can't say. So but going, you can see where we are with our four-year graduation rate, but in addition to that, you can see that we also look at our five-year and our six-year and out graduation rate because for some students, it takes a little bit longer to reach that point of that graduation point. So and here you go, four-year, five, six, and seven-year cohort rate and you can see where Oshkosh compares um to the state when it comes to graduation rate. So we keep track of students um and see where they end after graduation. So it's often asked, how are we doing when compare, with comparables? And so when we're looking at graduation rate, um it, we have up here looking at large districts and as you can see for large districts, the Oshkosh Area School District outperforms the state and the large districts, we are the eleventh largest school district in the state and you can see where we stand um with that when it comes to our graduating classes. Then also, it's how do we compare to um our athletic conference or our neighboring school districts and you can see where we are when it comes to graduation rate compared to our neighbors. And by the way, if you're interested in viewing any of these numbers or this report, this is included in the board packet, you can see the, all the slides within there. So another piece is, is all right, after students graduate, um what are, what are they doing after, with their high school diploma after graduation? And so one thing that we do track and we're interested in is are students enrolling in post-secondary options afterwards? And as we've been presenting on being college, career, and community ready, we've been talking about our students accessing post-secondary and we've been a little bit concerned at the rate that our students in the Oshkosh Area School District had been accessing post-secondary um education. And so academic and career planning, looking at college, career, and community ready, I know for our students that are um with us here on the board, we know that in W-hour and Excel hour, we are working on academic and career planning and if you haven't done so already, you're going to be working with a tool called Zello, I don't know if you were introduced to that yet, but it's coming, um to say how do we plan for what we're doing after high school. And so we're seeing some movement when it comes to that and when you look at our class, class of two thousand eighteen, we've moved up to fifty-four point nine percent of our students were accessing post-secondary directly after high school. Several of you have asked questions about, well, what about gap years, are those students in there? They didn't enroll right after high school, so yeah, they are represented in that percentage that didn't enroll directly after high school. And so what we're seeing there is that the further out students go, they are accessing post-secondary, um but for a lot of our, our jobs, for a lot of our um careers that students are going into, they need post-secondary education, so and you can see the trends there. So let's go into, um let's go into our academics and we're gonna start with the subject area of math. And so when you look at this, when we ask the question, what is the trend in math proficiency? This is looking at all students, grades three through eight, our whole entire district, and their trend and the state trend when it comes to proficiency. And so we've had a little bit of a decline there and um when we get into the data, you'll see exactly where that is and I'll point that out, um what is, what's going on with our trend. So first off is how are we performing by grade level when it comes to math? You know that in grade, in our elementary school, um just uh it's now, we're in our third year, I believe, of Bridges implementation, our comprehensive four-K-five math curriculum and one of the things we were seeing a decline in proficiency in math in elementary and so you can see with our Bridges curriculum, we are seeing a coming up of that uptick. But you notice eighth grade and you're gonna go, what is going on with eighth grade? So number one, number one, um in our region, we've seen a decline in eighth grade, so we're taking a look, a lot of our um local school districts surrounding us, we use college preparatory mathematics, so we're looking at a curriculum alignment piece of it. And the second thing is that I can tell you that in our school district, um when we were grappling with everyday math and trying to find a comprehensive math resource, we did some dismantling of the looping of the curriculum and we're seeing an impact of that coming through here, so we're backfilling and we're making sure that we're getting caught up in our curriculum pieces and you're gonna see the impact of that once we get to high school here in just a second. But this is, this is our last group um that we are getting through that uh curriculum gap, if that makes sense. So how is the OASD performing by grade level in grades nine and ten? Now you can see, here's where ACT Aspire comes in, our math proficiency, you can see our trend um in Oshkosh and we are outpacing the state. Our ninth and tenth graders did very well on the, on the ACT Aspire and you can, we at, we recently, um this is now our second year, we did um a retraining in algebra at the high school level and we're seeing the impact of that and that also, we see that when students transition from eighth to ninth grade, backfilling into that gap. So how is the Oshkosh Area School District performing in grade eleven, which is on ACT? You can see as a state, there has been a decline as a nation, there, that's been, that's been the trend, um and you can see we've been following the trend, but we have a little bit of, we're outpacing the state though with this, so um I'm very optimistic with that, um we're outperforming the state as far as math goes there, so. So a key indicator when it comes to graduation in college, career, and community readiness is how students are performing on eighth-grade math. And so once again, we're taking a look at this because our eighth graders are not where we want them to be with proficiency, so you can see um twenty-five point six, we're on the Forward Exam. iReady is one of our new diagnostic assessment tools and so last year, our eighth graders in the spring, and this was after the Forward Exam, so this is what also leads us to believe a little bit that we have like curriculum timing when it comes, um when it comes inside of eighth grade because we were at forty-four point five percent um with the spring, with the spring assessment at eighth-grade math proficiency. So with our, some of the adjustments that we've made, we're predicting that our eighth graders are gonna be in a much better spot and also they're gonna perform well as ninth graders. So taking a look at where we are um on the Forward Exam in math compared to our other districts, you can see trends over time and you can see where Oshkosh is compared to our neighboring districts and the state average this coming, this past school year. And then this is a different way to take a look at this, this is the comparison between districts over time, um this way when you take a look at it and you can see with our neighboring districts, we have some outliers. but they're also seeing the same trend when it comes to mathematics. Okay. I'm going to pause here for a second before we head into reading. Because we are presenting a whole lot of information here. And I know that you've had an opportunity to take a look at the, to take a look at the slides. So before we go into reading and English Language Arts, do you guys have any questions on math?
Questions? Anyone?
She answered them already.
Emily?
No.
Okay. All right. So let's transition into reading or English Language Arts. So this slide is, how is the Ashkash Area School District performing by grade level in reading? And so that's in kindergarten, first grade, and second grade. And we are using, this is a statewide recommended screener, which is PALS. And PALS stands for Phonemic Awareness Early Literacy Screener. And so this takes a look at where, this is the spring data. So this takes a look at where students are at the end of instruction at kindergarten, first, and second grade. So this is their early literacy skills. You're going to notice, one thing you're going to notice with kindergarten is you're going to notice going across the board that we've had a steady decline with kindergarten. I want to back us up to four K and actually the fall of kindergarten. So before instruction has even begun for our kindergarteners here in the Ashkash Area School District, we've also seen a decline in students and their, their fall screening underneath PALS. And so what we're noticing is that students are coming in recognizing less letters, like out of the twenty-six letters of the alphabet, they're coming in recognizing less letters than they have five or six years ago. So each year, there's been a decline in students' literacy readiness when it comes to those skills. So when you start to take a look at this decline, you're, you also have to remember that we were starting from a lower point each time. And so we're having to really fill those skills for students. And then going through there. So for our students in K one, two, as a district in the spring, we had seventy percent of our students were at benchmark in grades K one and two at the end in the spring. So as we go now into state testing, because our third graders are their first, they're, that's the first year that they take a standardized assessment. But notice, we're not saying reading anymore. We're saying ELA. And ELA stands for English Language Arts. And so on state assessments, none of our state assessments measure only reading. Our state assessments for English Language Arts, you're looking at areas of reading, writing, speaking, and listening. There are, well, there's no speaking. You don't speak into it. But there is absolutely listening comprehension that is embedded into that, into the state assessment. So it's a combination of those. So here is where we are as a state in red. And you can also see the trend, the trend with Ashkash when it comes to proficiency in English Language Arts. And so this is how, this is where performance is by grade level in English Language Arts, Ashkash compared to the state. You'll notice our third graders, our fourth graders, our fifth graders. And then as we're getting into middle school, we are really making some progress with students when it comes to English Language Arts. What we're seeing as a trend is that the longer students are with us in Ashkash, the better they're, they're better they're performing because our students are growing. When we get into the board report, when it comes to school report cards, I will show you more in depth where our data is supporting that. So another key area is third grade reading. We know that if students are not proficient readers at third grade, that this is an indicator of, as they may struggle as they go up in their grades. Because right at that third grade is where we switch from learning to read to reading to learn, right? We're using our reading skills to help us learn content. So if you look at the forward exam, we had thirty-one point five percent of third graders scored at proficient or advanced. If you look at all elementary students, you can see where they are scoring proficient and advanced. And then also the basic categories at thirty-six point six. And I put both those numbers up there because it's often asked, we're seeing a much higher level of students performing on the developmental reading assessment at grade level compared to the forward exam. And why is that? Why are we giving the DRA or the Development Reading Assessment if it's not telling us how students are going to perform on the forward exam? Two different assessments for two very different reasons. So first off, remember that our forward exam is a standardized test that looks at reading, writing, and the language pieces. So it's bundling it all together. As teachers, we want to know how students in particular are doing at that crucial skill of reading and breaking that down and finding out what is going to be the next instructional move, either to support a student or to stretch a student as a reader. And so when you look up there, for all elementary grade, for all elementary students, we have seventy-four point two percent of students are reading at grade level benchmark. For fifth graders in particular, we had eighty-seven point nine, we're reading at that grade level benchmark. So it's measuring a very different, it's measuring a very different thing. And it's measuring foundational reading skills, not the English Language Arts, which is a lot more complex. Go ahead, Dr. Cartwright.
I apologize. Is there any way that you can expand just a little bit? So what does proficient actually mean when we're talking about the, the forward exam? Is that grade level?
Actually, forward exam does not calculate or does not correspond to grade level. What it corresponds to is that it says, this is, this is a cut score or this is a benchmark that we want students to meet. It's more of a, it's more of a criterion reference test. We're seeing this is where we believe students should be, and we want them to meet a particular standard. It does not correlate or correspond to a grade level. Developmental reading assessment does.
And just for clarification, because I know there's a lot of questions out there related to this as well. When the cut score was actually, or those cut points were being made for the forward exam, that was in comparison to the NAEP, what is being considered with proficient as well. Is that accurate?
That's accurate. And so if you have been with us on the board, and I think Allison, you may have been here. I, do you remember when they took the WKCE? That was the previous assessment? And they actually NAPE-ized or adjusted the cut scores to be more in line with the national NAEP pieces? And so we saw, so if you remember that, we were, we were having in our district, we were more in the seventy, seventy to eighty percent of students were at a proficient or advanced level. And so when we went to the NAEP cut score, that brought that down. And we did a lot of education, talking about, nobody panic. Your student didn't from one year to the next lose knowledge or lose, you know, the information. It's, we're taking a look at it on a different scale, right?
Right.
So sometimes I would like to be right in kilograms versus pounds. It makes me feel better, right?
I like that idea. I think I'm going to change my.
My mass is, my mass is the same, but you know, the number makes me feel better. So that, once again, the knowledge, the knowledge that children have and the learning that they have has, Junam Singh has remained the same. It's the way we're measuring it has changed.
Exactly. And even just for clarification, even with the NAEP and what they consider to be proficient, they also report out that is not a measure for what is considered to be grade level proficiency. It's, 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 it's a different type of measure. So a lot of times, just to equate maybe what Julie was also talking about in a little bit different terminology. You know, for example, many of us, when we were going to school, in order to get an A on the paper, what did you have to score? Probably a ninety, right? Whereas the cut score now may, maybe are somewhere around ninety-seven to ninety-eight or ninety-nine to be considered to be proficient as the way in which Wisconsin defines proficient. It's not a great, it's not, it's not, we're not talking grade level. It's just, is where that score is equated to. And please clarify if I, if I misstated any of that.
Great.
Thank you.
Just, just one point of information, Dr. Cartwright. Could you explain NAEP?
NAEP is the National Assessment of.
Educational Progress.
Thank you, Educational Progress. And the NAEP exam is one of those common exams that's given across the entire United States. It does provide for you the opportunity in which to do state-to-state level comparisons, which is very important because if you're looking at just the state exams, there's a lot of things that are artificial within those scores. So for example, you may be looking at hypothetically, you may look at Mississippi, and it may say that eighty percent of their students are proficient in English Language Arts. But how, what is that measuring? Where's the cut point put? And what is the content and those kinds of things? It may be drastically different than what Wisconsin is or what Florida is or what Massachusetts may. The NAEP allows us to compare from state to state to state based on similar standards. And well, not similar, well, on the same standards, the blueprint's the exact same. The questions are the same, and it measures it at grades four, eight, and ten?
No, twelve.
Twelve.
Fourteen and twelve.
However, district, districts are actually randomly chosen, selected to be, to participate. Therefore, district results are not provided at that level. It's only provided at the state level.
Yep. So for example, this school year, none of the Ashkash Area School District schools were selected to participate in NAEP. The year before, I believe we had South Park, Jefferson, Trigg, or, I know Tippler has participated in the past. Ashkash North has been chosen in the past. Merrill Middle School's been chosen in the past. So it is completely and statistically random when you're chosen. So and we are required to participate. If we take federal and state funding, then we are required to participate.
So it's a common exam that's used across the fifty states?
Absolutely.
And there was a time when you could say, thank you for inviting us, but we choose not to participate.
Correct. That is not, if, if we accept federal, if we accept federal funding, we sign off that we will, we will participate.
Thank you very much.
And we do sign off.
Good team effort there.
So I have a question on the slide before I move on.
Sure.
So you explained the difference I get now that the DRA tests just reading and the forward exam tests, reading, writing, listening. Do they break the forward exam up and show into those different categories?
They do not give a reading score, Junam Singh a reading score only. They break it down into text complexity, vocabulary, like it is not.
Yeah.
And we've, we've talked with our, we've talked with Department of Public Instruction, with the State Accountability Office, that we would, we would like to see that, but that, that is not the domains that it's measuring.
Okay.
We have a text-dependent analysis, the writing portion of it. But no, that's not what it's measuring.
That's kind of what I wondered, because if we look back at the ACT scores, writing seems to be a weakness. So I wondered if.
Well, writing, you have to remember, writing is off of a twelve-point scale on that.
Oh, I didn't know that.
So composite goes all the way up to thirty-two, and writing is on a tw, is on a twelve-point scale.
Oh, so that's why it's six. Okay. Because on that graph, it looks like.
I believe it was six point eight. Yeah, I believe it was six point eight. So.
Thanks for fixing two of my.
Oh, excuse me, six point two.
Thanks. Perfect. Thank you.
Exactly. So it does, it does look, it does look a little, I know, you were like, wow, we can't write and no.
No, that, that is what I was thinking.
No, it's on a twelve-point scale.
Okay. Thank you. So it fits with the others.
All right. So any, this great discussion, any other questions? All right, we're going to change subjects, and we're going to go into, oh, no, we have more ELA. I thought, I was getting ahead of myself here. So here's grades, here's grades nine and ten. And once again, our ninth and tenth graders rocked last year. And you can see their movement here. We, I love it when we cross the line with the state average right there. And so it was really our ninth graders that really did that for us this, this past year. And here are, here is where we're at with grade eleven when it comes to English Language Arts. And once again, this is another example of, you can see as we're, we're starting to close that gap. So I like this graph too. I hope that we cross the line. So here is, here are comparisons between districts, percent of students proficient and advanced on the forward ELA. And then you can see where we are at with our comparative districts. So it is often asked to us, what are districts doing that, that we're, you know, that are above us on this chart? I can tell you right now that every single one of the districts that are above us on the chart, we are using the, we are using Cockin, they're using Cockin's writing, they're using Cockin's reading and Cockin's phonics. And that's what we use. So. And so when you're starting to take a look at curriculum and collaborating with our area districts, we all have, we are all using very similar curriculum. We're using very similar curriculum pieces. I'm going to get more into talking about curriculum here in just a second. Here is where we're looking at percent of students proficient and then comparison over time by district. And you can see some similar trends with districts as us, as we are, because as a state as a whole, English Language Arts has declined on this particular assessment. Oh, and let me back up here. So before I move on into this, one area that we have talked about, and we have talked about extensively, and that is part of reading and is foundational to reading is phonics. And so we, the board just recently approved this past spring, adopting a new phonics program. We're going to talk more about this at Education Committee tomorrow, but it is going very well. And we are expecting to see some changes in our data based on that as well. So in all of this, big data helps us in, helps us learn more about as a school district and as a school, what types of curriculum, what is working for students and what is not? And how do we make decisions so that we are best meeting their needs? And phonics was absolutely in need. And so I'm, I'm going to be very interested to see how our data is impacted by that new curriculum implementation. Switching subjects, now we can switch subjects. We're going into science. And so science is only tested at fourth grade and eighth grade on the forward exam. And so you can see where we are with proficiency levels compared to the state two thousand eighteen. And then here is our trends in science. So you can see as the state has been increasing, we have been increasing as well. But I would like to cross, like to be above that, like to cross that line. And once again, our ninth and tenth graders did an awesome job on ACT Aspire. And you can see where we are on science compared to the state. And we are on an upward trajectory there. And here is where we are with grade eleven science. You can see in Ashkash, we were at a nineteen point six composite, and statewide, we were at a nineteen point nine, if that gives you some. That's another thing, as far as the state of Wisconsin goes for grade eleven, they have set a cut score of where proficiency is. I really like to put the, like the ACT actual out of thirty-two score up there because that gives a better reference on where, do you know, where that is, where that is at. Because where we have set proficiency as a state and what you see as readiness as a composite for ACT, our proficiency cut score is quite high as a state. Performing in social studies district-wide, our tenth graders once again did very well. And our eighth graders are above the state average in social studies. And here is our trend. There's been a slight decline at the state and also in Ashkash. But keep in mind, this past spring, we adopted new social studies standards. And so working, working on those pieces and curriculum that comes with that. So question, before I go into this, any questions on science or social studies before we switch into our next part? All right. So before we go into this next part, we, what I want to go over is what our Ashkash Area School District demographics look like for last school year, for the eighteen, nineteen school year. Because as we start to talk about, we're going to start talking about gaps and how different subgroups or different groups of students are performing compared to their peers. Okay, so students without disabilities compared to students with disabilities. So when we're talking about this, we want to know what, you know, what, what does the, what do those, what do the numbers, what do those groups of students look like? So our total enrollment this past school year, you can see is nine thousand nine eleven. We had fifteen point five percent of that population is students with disabilities. So you can see, that's one thousand five hundred and thirty-six students, right? Economically disadvantaged, we are as a school district, we're at forty-two point two percent. And so you can see four thousand one hundred and eighty stu, two students qualify for free and reduced lunch, our number of English learners, and then for race and ethnicity. One thing that I was asked by Dr. Cartwright is, just real quickly, is a lot of times we're going, we keep saying things have shifted in the Ashkash Area School District. So I did a little research and I said, so where were we ten, where were we ten years ago, right? So ten years ago would have been the two thousand eight, or I actually have two thousand seven, two thousand eight school year. So for our percent of students on free and reduced lunch, we were at thirty-two point three percent. And then. And then, and then when we're also looking at subgroups, we also look at our percent of students in each of, based on race and ethnicity. And at the time, we were at eighty-six point two percent of our students would identify as white at that point in time. And we're looking at seventy-six point five percent of our students now. So then that got me thinking, and I went a little bit further back. And so I went to two thousand two, two thousand three school year, and our free and reduced lunch rate in the two thousand two, two thousand three school year was twenty-three point eight percent.
It's almost doubled.
And so if you're looking to, if you're looking to fact-check my numbers, you can go onto the DPI website underneath, underneath the enrollment and free and reduced archives, and you can find that information for all school districts in the state of Wisconsin. So, that put, so that could, because we've been asked that quite a bit, so...
So it's doubled in twenty years, is what I just got from those numbers? Our free and reduced lunch, has the free and reduced lunch threshold changed dramatically over time?
No.
Okay, so it really has doubled. That's a real number.
So when we're starting to think about numbers, we talk about minding the gap. And so in our, in our new strategic plan, three point O, we talk about narrowing the opportunity gap. And today, we're gonna really be minding the achievement gap. We're gonna be looking at how students, you know, are doing compared to their peers. So one thing to keep in mind here is that when we look at our students with disabilities, approximately seventy-five percent, if you're a student with disability, seventy-five percent of them are, qualify for free and reduced lunch or economically disadvantaged. English language learners, approximately eighty percent of our ELS are economically disadvantaged. And when, when we look at race and ethnicity, thirty percent of white students, about, and these are just approximate, so are economically disadvantaged. Where our students of color, or students that are not identifying as white, seventy percent are economically disadvantaged. So when we were talking about this, when we did this presentation last year, and as we've been taking a look at this, flowing across all of our subgroups, we're also looking at, and you talked about poverty or your free and reduced lunch rate, we're looking also at students that are economically disadvantaged. So that is a common theme across all of these subgroups. So keep that in mind as we're talking about minding the gap. So when we start taking a look at these, these graphs, you're maybe going, oh, my gosh, I can't see any of these, and what does this look like? Once again, this, these are all in your, all in the board packet, and you can have access to that. But when we, first, we're looking at how are subgroups of students doing compared to their peers in English Language Arts? And so here are each of the, the race and ethnicity groups, and you can see how each of those groups are doing in comparison to each of, each of those. But once again, we have, we have a gap. Our students of color are not performing as well in English Language Arts as, as their peers.
That's a big drop.
And this is, in this particular case, this is ACT, is the test that we're looking at here.
Okay, so this is after...
This is, this is ACT.
Third year, so two thousand sixteen, seventeen is when we saw the first drop. That's when everybody had to take it, right?
No, fourteen, fifteen was the first year that everybody had to take it, but it was the class of two thousand seventeen.
Oh.
Junim Singh, like when we go through, wait a minute. Okay, now I'm getting myself confused. Okay, so the class of two thousand eighteen was the third graduating class where everybody had to take the ACT.
Eighteen, seventeen, sixteen, so fourteen, fifteen, they did it.
It looks like there's a big change, right, at fifteen, sixteen for all of the...
Yep, so there you go.
Okay.
That's gonna happen, yeah.
Thank you for the assist, everyone. Here we are, we're looking at ELA, and we're looking at economically disadvantaged versus not economically disadvantaged. And you can see how students are doing in comparison. You can see as a district, we, you can see our uptick, but our gap is remaining the same.
Yeah.
How are students, this is students with disability versus students without disability. So you can see our students without disabilities, the uptick, where students with disabilities are kind of flat, consistent there, so. And remember, all students take the ACT, except the one percent, and actually, it's under one percent for us, of students with significant disabilities. Then we're taking a look at math. This is ACT, so this is race and ethnicity. And you can see, there's actually a little bit of closing the gap here. So we've had a little bit of uptick there. This is looking at ACT student without disabilities, students with disabilities. We're looking at economically disadvantaged versus not economically disadvantaged. And you can see here, this, there was a little bit of decline, but we also had an uptick with our students that are economically disadvantaged. So you can see the gap closing a little bit there. And then here we have, this is the forward exam. So this is looking at students in grades three, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, students with disabilities, students without disabilities. Forward exam math, students with disabilities versus without disabilities. Economically disadvantaged versus not economically disadvantaged. Forward exam math, economically disadvantaged versus not, did I just have that? Nope, that was ELA, this was math, okay. Then how are students on the forward exam doing? This is ELA, when taking a look at, by race and ethnicity. And taking a look at math, based on race and ethnicity. So the bottom line is, is we have gaps. And so within our strategic plan, one, we have the goal area of improving student learnings to ensure that all students are college, career, and community-ready. That's our first goal, right? And underneath there, that first priority area is narrowing opportunity gaps. And one of our major strategies underneath that is our equity work. And you can see through this, this is a big piece that goes behind that, because in order to make progress, we have to close, we have to close our gaps. Because once again, behind every single one of these lines, numbers, points, is a child, is a school, is a classroom, that are working really hard to demonstrate their learning on these standardized assessments.
Julie? I don't know if you can answer this, but I heard that the state of Wisconsin is number one now in the nation for having the biggest achievement gaps.
I don't know if it's number one. I know we're at the top of the, I know we're at the top of the list, especially for students that, especially for students that identify as black, for black students. Yes, yes. And I didn't, I don't know her exact position on there, and for the state of Wisconsin...
But it's true for Ashkosh.
We absolutely have gaps.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And just for clarification, also, the artifact of the assessment that you're looking at can also influence those numbers as well.
Sure, sure.
Because oftentimes, if you have language within an assessment that may not necessarily be culturally responsive, or something to that effect, it can artificially inflate those differences. So just for the common good knowledge.
But the ACT is a national exam.
Correct, correct. I'm just talking, if we're talking, it depends what assessment you're looking at.
Okay.
But if we also go back to standardized assessments, one of the best predictor of how a student is going to perform on a standardized assessment, is their economically, is their economic status.
Yep.
Unfortunately, the statistic on that is...
It's been a great for...
Right, because it gets into opportunity. Families that have means available to them, oftentimes, they just give their children more opportunities than families that don't have...
Although, it'll be interesting to see if that continues, now that we've seen five to six years of 4K kids coming in. It's different now.
It is different a little bit, yeah.
Interesting, okay, thanks.
This is looking at the forward exam for English language learners. It's interesting, we hold our English language learners to the same proficiency levels that we do native speaking English students. So that's, that's always interesting. But I can tell you right now, our English language learners do a terrific job. And we, we really need to make sure that we, students that are bilingual or multilingual, that we are, we are celebrating that skill. I like this graph. This one is our forward exam for our English learners in math, in closing, closing the gap there. So we're making growth there. So that, that was, that was a lot. So, so questions, questions, questions.
Any questions or comments? I do have one more question, and I apologize, it's gonna take us all the way back to the beginning. I just wondered how much classroom time is needed to administer the district mandated tests? That's slide four.
Yep, slide, okay, so slide four. So I needed a little bit more time to prep that.
Okay.
So I went through, and I did a quick, what I did do is I took a look at elementary, middle school, and high school, and I did a quick look at the number of minutes spent on assessments at the elementary, middle, and high school level compared to our overall instructional minutes. So here's what I found out. So with our forward exam in grades three and five, it states that it should take two hundred and twenty minutes for students to take the test, okay? And for fourth grade, it would be approximately four hundred and ten minutes. Then when we put in I-ready, because I can readily say to you, this is how many minutes it should take, I-ready takes approximately fifteen minutes. And remember, some students go fast, some students, you know, take a little bit more time, which is perfectly fine. Fifteen minutes, you do a dipstick three times a year, two subject areas, that would be three hundred minutes, okay? But you have to remember, then, all of these assessments at the elementary level are not timed. You know, so some students are gonna take longer, some students are going to do that. So when you, when you take a look at that, I went through and added that up. So if you take like a third grader, two hundred and twenty plus three hundred, that's five hundred and twenty minutes. Let's say you double that for logistics and everything else. Out of sixty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-five instructional minutes per year, you're looking at that it takes less than one percent of the instructional minutes to do I-ready and forward exam, like at the elementary school. But I think what you're getting at with your question is, a lot of times, it feels like as educators that we are assessing, assessing, assessing students, and we're not really getting the instructional pieces. So what we've been doing, and what we've been working on when it comes to assessment, is what we don't wanna do is just have hunches or guesses about where a child actually is at when it comes to starting and guiding their instruction. Because sometimes our hunches are, you know, the student is very quiet, they're well-behaved, and we just make this, that everything's going well with them. And then when we sit down and we do an assessment with them, like we do at Elementary Advantage Math Recovery, which is a one-on-one, like conferencing-type assessment with a student, and we find out, wait a minute, this is an area I would have never have known that they were struggling in, or they need additional support, or I find out that they're way beyond this. We need to be stretching this student and putting, and doing some things differently with them. You don't, we don't wanna go by hunches. We wanna go by, what is the student doing and demonstrating for us so that we know where to make our instructional move as teachers? And does that take time? Absolutely, that takes time. What, what I don't want us to do, and I want us to be cautioned with, is adding more standardized testing? Please, no. I mean, that is, we absolutely don't want to do that. But when we're talking about our assessments that we use in our school district, they're really curriculum-based. When you look at that list on there, it is, like, when you look at the writing assessment, the writing assessment is the end of the unit assessment that goes with our writing curriculum, right? And we wanna track and take a look at that. Advantage Math Recovery is embedded into our Bridges Math Curriculum. We wanna take, Junim Singh, we wanna take a look at that. The other thing is, is that we're really working with our educators to take a look at assessment as, as part of the feedback loop, part of the instruction loop, when it comes to working with students, that it doesn't have to be this event where we go, we stop everything in the classroom, and we're gonna do this test today. Because it's not necessarily that. What we're doing is, we're taking a look at, what are the spectacular things that you know and are able to, Junim Singh, know and able to do? As we get, as students get older, that shifts a little bit more, because it does seem a lot more, we call it summative, right, it's at the end, or at the end of the unit. So like with middle schoolers, I did the minutes with middle schoolers. So for forward exam and I-ready, you're looking at middle schoolers, it would be two thirty-five for the forward exam, and three hundred minutes, once again, for the I-ready, once again, not timed. So you're looking at five hundred and thirty-five minutes. But once again, we know the logistics added on to that is gonna take more time out of that, not timed. And for high schoolers, ACT Aspire takes two hundred and eighty-five minutes, and that one's timed, right? The ACT takes two hundred and fifteen minutes, or about three hours. But once again, it takes more, that's the actual testing time, not, now you have to pause, you take a break, you know, do all that kind of such. And then forward exam at grade ten adds another seventeen minutes. So on the surface, when you take a look at, oh, there's seventy-one thousand four hundred and fifty-six minutes in a high school year when it comes to instruction, it looks like, well, that doesn't seem like that's a whole lot of minutes when it comes to standardized testing or minutes. But once again, standardized testing and formalized testing disrupts a whole school's day and schedule, which I think that feels more like it's how much assessing and testing are we actually doing, right? And the other thing is, is that at the classroom level, if we're doing assessing and we're collecting data and we don't use it, shame on us, right? Because we need to be doing that. So sometimes, I feel like if we're not, if we're not communicating, we're not reporting out to families, et cetera, on what the results of those assessments are, how students are doing and reporting on the progress, it feels like we're just doing testing and nothing's coming of it. So one thing that we're doing this school year is, we are working on doing a better job of communicating with families on students' progress, especially at the elementary level. So for example, coming up in the next week, families are gonna get mailed home the I-ready results for students in reading and math. So you can see, this is where your child was at, at the start of the school year, in grades three, four, five, and then we will be communicating that out the rest of the way. So I think those are, those are things that we're all working towards. So if we're assessing, and it leads to improve student learning and giving information to the teacher and the student, great, and that's exactly what we want. If we're testing and we're not doing anything with it, or we're assessing and not doing anything with it, then why are we doing it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Does that, does that help? And we can go further into that at Education Committee tomorrow.
Yeah, I know, that's what I thought. I'm even writing a note right now to ask at Education Committee tomorrow. So I think that's a better place to go deep. Any other questions or comments?
That was a lot of information, but it was great, thank you. It was good, I really liked the, how it's set up, it was good. And I'm glad that Liz asked about the sex. Some people at home are like, what? Yeah.
I haven't had to deal with the ACT since like, yeah, the late nineties, so I didn't know that they... I didn't even have to do the writing, I didn't know.
I do have a question, knowing that behind every student, or behind, behind every piece of data that's been presented here, are one or more students, since we have lines as well as bar graphs. And knowing that we have a strategic plan, which includes a goal related to improving student performance.
Yep.
How, how does our district then use all these data points, this information, to improve what's going on in the classroom, so hopefully, we improve student performance? Not just to increase the scores for the score sake, but rather to improve student performance so that they can then maybe take more difficult courses, or more challenging courses, or courses that they thought might be close to them, like cap courses? Or to, just to ensure that all our kids are college, career, and community-ready? So what do we do with all this? What do you all do with all this data?
So what you're describing is not, is not addressing achievement gaps, it's addressing opportunity gaps, right? And making sure that students have the background and the things that they need so that they can access all those wonderful things that we have going on, and opportunities within the Ashkosh area school district. So that right there is the heart of our, of our equity work that we're working on, is making sure that we have the beliefs, that we are looking at the strengths of every single student, that leads them to being able to be college, career, and community-ready, that we, as the adults, are putting into place practices, that we are providing instruction, that all means all, and that we are meeting the needs of all students that are within our classroom. That's a tall order. That's a really tall order. Our staff work incredibly hard. We have amazing staff, and we have amazing teachers. So asking anybody within our school district to work harder, they would say, that's crazy. So, asking anybody within our school district to work harder, they would say, that's crazy talk, right? Because we're already working hard. So, it's using this data to take a look at, how do we do things differently so that we can meet the needs of all students? So that every, so that doors are open for all students, that they can meet all of those opportunities? So, it's looking at our systems, it's looking at our process procedures. And we know we're making changes, we know things are working, because our data is moving, but also based on the stories and the experiences of our students, right? And our families within our district. So, it's using that to shine, I think I've used the analogy of using a flashlight to shine the way. But more importantly, it's then using that data to do something with it, and then monitor it, to take a look at it, and say, have we made a difference? Have we closed a gap within a graph? Have we done, have we done those things? So, that's, that's a very vague or big answer for a very big, big piece, right?
I feel you answered my, my question more than, than adequately. I, I think the, the root of that is not working harder at what we're already doing, but working smarter, working differently.
Yeah.
Because we know that, for example, you've, you've done a great job of sharing, for example, the changing demographics, and then you enlightened us with data going back ten, sixteen years. These, the children of, the students of today are not the students of five, ten, sixteen years ago.
Yep.
And the students moving forward, five years, ten years from now, will not be the students who we have today. And I know there are some studies out there, I don't have them in front of me, but I know there are some studies looking at, what are the, the needs of students for the year 2032, which I believe is the graduation date of current kindergarten students.
Yeah, because we've been using twenty thirty, now we're at twenty thirty-two.
There are at least three studies out there that take a look at, what are some of those skills and, and knowledge bases that students of that time will need? And, and they're changing, or at least they're projected to change.
Yeah.
With artificial intelligence and all kinds of things. So, meeting the needs of the students who are now in the pipeline and those who are coming through is a challenge of every school district.
On top of changing demographics for our district.
That's right.
And as Julie has very well laid out for us, it's, we know oftentimes, when we have changing demographics and the direction for which we're changing our, of, of our changing demographics, it brings a lot more needs. And it also, it also requires that we operate differently. But it, again, it brings a lot of different needs than what we've had. And so, it's, how, how do we ensure, again, that we're looking at our children through that asset-based mindset? And ensuring that we're taking care of them by looking for the appropriate resources for them.
Thank you, Dr. Cartwright. Are there any other questions or comments? Again, thank you for very comprehensive and transparent.
So, I'll be back in December to talk about district and school report cards.
Well, I'll get forward to that, thank you.
Okay, moving on with our agenda, then, we have a consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will, will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. Tonight, the board will consider the approval of, one, approval of Act 143, School Safety Plan Confirmation Letters. That's the only agenda item, so there's not a need to pull it, because as soon as it's, there's a motion. Want to pull that one? Okay, we can pull that one. And there's a second, there's an opportunity for discussion. So, I will read the resolution. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh area school district board of education approve the school district's safety plan confirmation letters for 2019, 2020 to fulfill the annual requirements of Act 143 as filed with the secretary to the board of education.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? This is a requirement that is indicated in the resolution, that we need to provide confirmation letters that certain aspects of safety plans have been carried out in each school, and those are signed by the school principal, and then they will be signed by the school superintendent and the board president, assuming the resolution is approved. Any further discussion?
I just, they did a great job with all the, how they wrote it up. I loved reading them, and then what they were good and what needs improvement. I think that really, I really liked how, the format that they used, and it was very easy to read, too. It was a good job.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please call the roll.
Herzog?
Yes, aye.
Herzog, aye. Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Pusel? Slocie?
Aye.
Slocie, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Motion carried.
Very good, thank you. Are there, are there additional individually considered resolutions tonight? Seeing none, are there, is, are there requests for any future agenda items? Seeing none, are there any announcements?
I just have a quick announcement. I heard on the radio, may or may not have been a local station, say that the board turned down the bids for Smith because the bids were too low. And I would like to set the record straight, that the bids were rejected because they didn't follow the requests, the directions in the bid process.
Thank you.
I don't know if anybody's watching, but that rubbed me the wrong way. I want to make sure I set the record straight.
Thank you. Thank you. I hadn't heard that, so thank you.
I hadn't heard that yet either.
Anyone else with an announcement? I actually have two. I forgot to mention earlier, and I was reminded by our high school student from West, that the Masonic Temple hosted an amazing art show of art from all of the district schools on Saturday, November second. So, first, I want to thank the Masonic Temple for making that available to all of our students, and thank our teachers and students for the amazing pieces of art that were displayed there. I did get a chance to talk to Mr. Riff from West High School, and he assured me that there will be some pieces from West High that will appear at the state school board convention, the joint convention of the school board, and the state superintendents, and the school business managers in January. So, that'll be great to see West represented there. And I also want to announce, which probably all of you already know, that Monday is Veterans Day, and it's a wonderful opportunity to thank veterans for their, their sacrifices that they and their families have made, and to participate in Veterans Day activities at our various schools. If you need information on those schools, you can probably contact this office or go to our website and find information there on the various Veterans Day opportunities to celebrate with our veterans and their family members. Any other announcements? All right, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Pusel?
Slocie?
Aye.
Slocie, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.